Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call this special meeting of the City of Bloomington Council to order. The time is now six o'clock. And if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kearns, present. Councilmember Bowlin, here. Councilmember Montney, here. Councilmember Danenberger, here. Councilmember Becker, here. Councilmember Hendricks, here. Councilmember Ward, here. Councilmember Lee, here. Councilmember Crumpler, here. Mayor Melo Wambay, here.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. We did just, we did receive an email earlier today that I just forwarded to you from Misty Metro's. I apologize, it came in last minute. And then we have four people registered to speak. And after you read your statement, we'll start with Gary Lambert and then Jackie Byer to follow.
Thank you. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time sees.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lambert. Under the previous administration, discussions seemed to be much more in the public. The previous mayor had Friday meetings where a lot of that was discussed. We had many more people attending meetings because they were aware more of what was going on. So what they ended up doing is expanding the time for public comment. I think from fifteen to thirty minutes. And that was to allow ten speakers. Occasionally, there would be more than that. So then they would put on a list and they'd go first the next time around. I noticed last time I spoke, I went a few seconds over and I think one other person did also. What I would suggest is if you have, pick a number, less than five people signed up to comment, allow them five minutes to speak. A lot of other communities do that. Rather than all business being conducted in your one-on-threes, it would give people more a chance to speak to each of you and become more involved, hopefully. Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Jackie Byer and then to follow Serena Fish.
Good evening, my name is Jackie Byer. I am thrilled to see that the City of Bloomington and the Bloomington Library are proposing reductions in their property tax rates to offset the significant EAV increases to bring the levy increase below five percent. I am also happy to see the public safety pension contribution increasing two point four million dollars this year. I do have a few questions about the city levy that I know you guys can't answer right now, but hopefully can be addressed by Mr. Rathbun or considered for questioning by the council during the levy presentation. First, was there any additional increase to the public safety pension from other revenue sources last year above the one point four million increase from the 2022 levy? Second, will there, will revenue from, will revenue from sources other than property taxes be increasing more than five percent that could be put towards a further reduction of the levy? Is it possible to keep the levy flat and use money from the general fund to pay for the three million dollar shortfall? I am really hearing about some astronomical increases in assessments. So if there is any way to provide additional relief, please do so. I also have a few questions for the library. Two point eight million dollars of the grant money was to go towards unknown construction cost inflation. Are construction costs above budget? If so, by how much? Is any difference between the grant money and actual construction costs being used to pay down the bond debt? Has the five million dollars from savings that was to be used for the expansion been completely spent? Where is the library at in terms of its fundraising for the expansion? Can any of that be used to reduce the bond or levy while still being able to cover inflation for existing services and increase staffing to minimum standards? Is any of the proposed levy increase planned to be used for things beyond existing services and staff? I'd also like to point out that the comparison of a one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar house from one year to the next is deceiving in an apples-to-oranges comparison. A one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar house last year with an EAV increase of thirteen percent will be valued at one hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred dollars this year. When applying the respective combined city and library proposed tax rates, that taxpayer living at that house will actually be paying forty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents more than last year and not the thirty-nine dollar ninety-five cent decrease shown on the tax levy exhibit. Thank you for listening to the concerned taxpayers and providing some significant relief. It is very much appreciated and thank you again.
All right, next up we have Serena Fish and then to follow Scott Staimling.
Serena Fish. First of all, I'd like to thank the city manager and anyone that agreed with him to have this special meeting. At least it tells me you're listening. And that's about all we can hope for right now. Hopefully we get some results. One of the things we spoke before, I spoke before, was the increase in the utility rates. Uh, the Illinois Commerce Commission just okayed increases, but not to the amounts that were asked for. And most of the time it's going to be fifty percent uh, less than what they were asked for. So instead of an eight percent, it may be a four percent. So that was a step that's going to help. One of the things that's happened and, and that's a good thing. Just so everyone's aware, May first, all of our garbage fees are going to go up because the fees on your containers are going up and that was automatically really voted in before. May first, um, a sixty-five gallon will go up, a ninety-five gallon will go up. And every year after that, it goes up again. And that's already in on the books. It's a done deal. So there's another increase that's coming. So that kind of wipes out the utility. Um, again, I just want to say thank you for at least stepping back a couple of feet and listening to your constituents, the people that pay your salaries, the people that elected you to help run this city because the same people that elected you can unelect you. Last thing I want to say is there is a West Side meeting, I'm putting on a different hat. There's a West Side meeting January ninth, which is a Tuesday, at Miller Park Zoo. And it will be our first election meeting. And hopefully we will have a sample ballot. And once it's all confirmed, I will be coming back out. Uh, and any candidate that is running is welcome to come to that meeting and speak. Thank you for your time.
Last up, we have Scott Staimling.
Scott Staimling, um, I, my concern is with the condition of the roads. Uh, the fact that the sidewalks are so bad that there was a neighbor out once, one day with their granddaughter. And this, the sidewalks are so bad, they went out and tried the streets. The streets were worse yet and they went back to their home. That street does not speak well for the City of Bloomington. Also, the, the city insists that the leaves be raked into the street, to the curb. And the people insist on putting them in the street. It was so bad today that I had to stop. There, the leaves were so bad, only one car could get through. And I could tell the truck was not going to let me through and so I just waited for him to leave. Now, they should not be in the street to begin with. But until the city starts handing out citations, they're going to continue it. The other, the other concern is, you know, I would hope that the city would really, uh, listen to the people and rather than to just sit there and not do anything and do as he cut and pick and please. Uh, basically, there was a had the city done a little each year, we would not be in crunch mode at this time. And, you know, the sidewalks were terrible and the roads were, but they kept neglecting, 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 and we're at crunch mode now. And I'm at the bottom of a steep hill, Fleetwood Drive, and that water comes rushing down the road when they rake them into the street, that floods the street and the city gets to come out and clean them out because I'm, I'm not cleaning them out. When they redistributed it today, when we had the high winds, they just redistributed the leaves. Thank you. And I would suggest that they get out and pick them up, just like on garbage day, they send a truck out. I suggest they have a schedule because once we go to store operations, uh, the leaves, they go bye-bye. Thank you.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. And I believe we only have a minute, so hopefully there is, uh, nobody's pulling out the minutes. So is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Ward. Um, we are voting electronically, right?
All right, I will call the two that it's not populating for. Uh, Councilmember Montney and Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Hendricks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, the item passes and no names to announce. And we are moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the, the regular agenda, a consideration in action on approving the twenty-twenty-three uh, tax levy estimate for the City of Bloomington and the Bloomington Public Library as requested by the Finance Department. And before I turn it over to City Manager Gleason, I just want to, um, at least, uh, commend the staff for, um, a lot of hard work, uh, that's been done, uh, to, uh, to bring forth, uh, something for us to consider. Um, but also for, uh, listening to, um, um, you know, previous comments made in the past and the, the concern. So I, I think, um, you know, there's, as you know, uh, with any municipality, there's always a a lot of things to balance. A lot of, um, um, concerns and, and issues and, and needs. And I, I think, uh, you know, the, the staff, uh, did the best they could to put forth something that is, uh, um, thoughtful, but is also, uh, thinking about, uh, the, the future. Um, so, um, like, I'm gonna then turn it over to City Manager Gleason, uh, to provide, um, more details and I believe, uh, Mr. Rathbun is also up. He's ready. There you go. All right. Um, so, Tim, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. This council also gets credit, uh, for the estimate that's being discussed this evening. Uh, very clear, uh, direction, uh, might be difference of opinions, but at the end of the day, felt, uh, the consensus or the majority felt strongly about, uh, lowering, uh, below what the, uh, increased levy amount, uh, that the county shared. Uh, at a little bit more than ten plus percent, trying to capture, uh, that growth from, uh, increased properties and increased, uh, residential, uh, and commercial, uh, values. Also, as a reminder, uh, this is just to, uh, set the levy estimate. Uh, the actual action item will be the second Monday of, uh, December, December eleventh, uh, for actual, uh, voting. And, uh, we have, uh, Finance Director Scott Rathbun that's going to walk us through this presentation. He's got an excellent slide as he's used in the past that shows, uh, again, a reminder to the community that, uh, fifteen, sixteen percent uh, captures our portion to include the libraries of the entire tax bill that any resident receives in the community. And then we have the, uh, uh, Library Executive Director, uh, Jeannie Hamilton, uh, that's available for any questions, comments after, uh, Scott walks us through the entire presentation. Scott?
Um, could, could I, um, make a motion? If possible, I'd like to separate out the discussions of the city and the library levies. Um, I think each topic is, deserves discussion and if I'd like to, um, talk about the city first and the library second, if I could make that motion now, please.
Um, sure.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so is there a?
Um, I, I might suggest that we, we roll through the same presentation, but you can separate the discussions or, or I can leave those slides out, the library. So I have some combined, uh, numbers in the presentation.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
That'd be fine, okay. Sounds good. Do you, do we still need this motion or?
Want to have two votes?
Yeah.
If you want to have two votes, then you need to split it out. But if you're just having two separate discussions, you can discuss one, discuss the other, and then move into one vote. So then, then you wouldn't need to change anything.
Does it? Yeah, thank you, Chris. Perhaps I wasn't clear. I would like two votes.
Two votes, okay, sounds good. So I don't think we, we need a motion for that, do we? We can just?
Well, you're essentially amending the agenda, so I, I think it's probably worth a motion.
Okay, sounds good.
Sorry.
All right, so we have a motion to separate the votes. Um, and
Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, are we voting electronically or, okay?
To clarify, a yes vote is a vote to separate the two items.
That is correct. Councilmember Hendricks?
No.
Councilmember Lee?
Okay, the motion passes and there are two names to announce?
Councilmember Hendricks, Councilmember Ward.
Okay, sounds good. All right. So I think we can move on to your discussion or presentation.
Leslie, do I have fifteen minutes from now or? Okay. Okay, well, um, the presentation as, um, as provided is going to incorporate both, uh, the, the city and the library. So tonight, um, this presentation is presenting the twenty-twenty-three levy estimate for the city and the library. That'd be for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budgetary purposes. Um, the levy is obviously a, a very important revenue source for both the city and the library. For the city, it's approximately twenty percent. It can vary, uh, of general fund revenues. Uh, for the library, it's over, over ninety percent of their, um, funding source. Um, by law, we have to file, uh, with the county, um, with the last, by the last working Tuesday in the calendar year, so that's December twenty-sixth this year. And then we must present an estimate prior, twenty days prior to the final adoptions. So that's why we normally end up in this November timeframe, uh, related to providing this estimate. Also, uh, the, the assessments are not typically updated. You know, they come up from the township to the county um, until late September, early October timeframe. So that's a little context as to, uh, where we are in the year as to this process. It is early in the budgetary process for the city, uh, but that's related to the statutory, uh, regu- requirements. Next slide, please. So from an educational standpoint, um, some of the comments during public comment, the levy is actually the tax request from the taxing districts. Um, so usually that's viewed as a proportion of the total uh, property value of the taxing district, which is put in terms of an EAV, the equalized assessed value, which is basically one-third of the total value of the taxing district. Um, so then the, the levy request, the requested tax amount divided by the EAV, that's the tax rate. So the right tax rate is a calculation of the amount asked for versus, uh, the EAV. Uh, as I mentioned, we received that preliminary EAV in September, um, late September, early October. And then there's some, there's people contest those assessments. Uh, there was a multiplier applied this year by the county. There's a, there's going to be some adjustments related to that. So we always apply a haircut, I refer to it as haircut, to that preliminary EAV we get from the, um, the county. And this year, we're using eight million dollars. Um, there's, there's some science behind that related to some, um, commercial property, uh, new construction that was not included in the EAV, worked with a, uh, the assessor and just got an idea of what to add for that. And then what came off, uh, last year. So we're arriving at an adjusted EAV of, of around two point three billion dollars. So this year, we're showing, uh, the progression from year to year. Typically, we just show that EAV, EAV change, but the, the eleven percent overall EAV um, estimate, uh, you can see there in that one, two, to the fourth column, but we're also showing, uh, the new development. So I've mentioned this in the past, um, you know, the hope is that your EAV is broadening, not just going vertical. So you're adding, uh, new development, new construction, and not just increasing values vertically across the board, um, uh, across the existing taxpayers. Next slide, please. So for this estimate, um, the tevy, the, the levy, uh, proposals are one point one million for the city and three hundred nine thousand, uh, for the library. So those, uh, uh, account for four point nine three percent increase, uh, versus that roughly eleven percent increase in the overall EAV. Uh, for the city, um, we're proposing, we restrict, um, the entire one point one, one million dollar, dollars to the public safety pensions, equally split between the police and fire, so there'd be five hundred fifty thousand dollars each. And the library, uh, to cover inflation and staffing needs. So from perspective, you know, four point nine percent, how, how do you get to that? Well, you know, if you're looking at year-over-year inflation for the September, which is, was one of the lower inflation rates, you know, during the year, that's three point seven. Then we had about one point, one percent increase in growth. So that gets us up to the upper four percent as far as like one percent for growth to support infrastructure growth uh, in the community. And then three point seven, three point eight percent related to inflation, expanding the revenue bases, inflation expand, expands as well, so trying to keep pace with inflation. So that's one perspective of looking at the increase, the four point nine percent. Next slide, please. So this exhibit, um, outlines our public safety pensions and the dollar amounts and the levy, uh, that exists and what we are proposing. So, um, the pension increase this year is quite substantial. Uh, this is calculated by our actuaries. We are using new actuaries this year. They, um, they adjusted some assumptions. Uh, we have different, uh, retirement schedules appears. People are retiring earlier. Um, they're building in, uh, a little higher inflation. Uh, there's some other cost adjustments that they've incorporated as well. Uh, so there was a pretty material increase in our contribution, uh, calculation by our current actuary. So you can see, I probably should reorder this next year, but in the far right column is the current year. So FY twenty-four contribution calculation is twelve point three million. Last year, we increased the levy by, by one point four million to nine point six. So you can see the funding components of that twelve point three million for FY twenty-four. So right now, we're funding about four hundred thousand dollars from general fund revenues. Um, if FY twenty-five, if we keep the levy level, the level levy, uh, column, middle column there, uh, we'll have a three million dollar, uh, revenue, restricted revenue shortfall uh, related to the, those, those revenues that we have restricted publicly for, um, the pensions. You can see that we lowered the utility tax a little bit from two point three million to two point one. We still have some decreases occurring in telecom. And also, we, we budget, I think, a little high for electric this year. Electric utility tax is not quite coming in as planned. And then for twenty-five, what we're proposing is taking the levy up by one point one million to ten point seven. Uh, so we'll have approximately, I'm just going to round up a two million dollar shortfall in those, uh, restricted revenues, um, you know, comments about, you know, we have had revenue growth. Uh, the council's heard me talk about that every month. Um, but we all are also incorporating, you know, over the last two years, um, an additional three million dollars over and above, uh, what we're, um, what we're incurring for asphalt and concrete from local motor fuel tax and ten percent of home roll. You know, that's, that's about seven million and we're, we're targeting ten million dollars for streets and sidewalks. So we're, we're subsidizing that fund by three million dollars from the general fund. And we've added staff, um, IT, we're adding staff for public safety. Um, those are some of the places where those additional revenues, that, that revenue growth is going. And, you know, inflation, um, you know, it's that double-edged sword I talked about. It's great for revenues, uh, but we are starting to have, feel that impact here at the city. You know, if you just roughly look at a hundred and, hundred million dollar budget for the general fund, which last year was a hundred and twenty-nine when we adopted, five percent on a hundred million, um, dollars is five million dollars. And so inflation really went up. It's, it's, it's coming back down now, but the overall prices have gone up significantly over the last two years. So that kind of does, demonstrates, um, where some of the tax revenues are going. We're having to make up with the, uh, the shortfall on the, uh, pensions from the general fund. We're committed to funding the, uh, streets and sidewalks and, uh, provide, continue with providing the same level of services, um, that we've provided to the city and what they expect. And then the last thing I'll comment on, um, is that, uh, putting additional dollars towards the pensions, public safety pensions is an, an additional demonstration to the rating agencies in the community about our commitment to the, to fulfilling that obligation. Next slide, please. So this is the detail for the city. These categories have accumulated over time. Uh, the, the general corporate and the bonds and interest kind of fluctuates depending on our payment schedules. Um, but you can see I bolded the, the fire pension, police pension, that's basically the ex, extra five fifty per, uh, um, line item there. And so going down that first column, twenty-three point four million, uh, the levy So going down that first column, 23.4 million, the levy request for the city, 1.1 million dollar increase, that's a 4.9% increase from the prior year, resulting in about a 0.0567% reduction in the rate. I, I do have notes on here, they're not on the exhibit, related to value increases for a resident of our, our community. So this shows what the reduction of $165,000 house, if it, if the value didn't go up, since the rate's going down at $31 savings. I calculated approximately the same for $165,000 house with a 3.9. I'm doing 3.9, I'm taking off the 1% for growth. We're going up 4.9, 1% for growth. You know, part of it's out, so that was my math. On $165,000 house, if you experience this 11% growth, but we're only increasing, but we're increasing by this 3.9%, your taxes are going to go up by $23 from the city. For a $250,000 house, acknowledging that 165 might not be the average anymore, that's about $35 increase. Next slide, please. So this is the layout for the library. You can see a couple of years ago, on that second line, we added substantially to the levy related to supporting the debt service for the library expansion, 850,000 the first year. And then the, the debt service is about at the 1.1 million dollars per year. So $309,000 increase for operations, that's at 4.9% that we just went through with the city components. Point will 159% reduction in the rate. So they're showing an 875 tax reduction on a $165,000 house that's held constant, using the same math as I did with the city. If the value of your house went up by 11%, 3.9% increase would be a $7 increase for a $165,000 house and a $10 increase for a $250,000 house. Next slide, please. So this is just, we, we have separate levies, obviously, but this is a combined view that we've normally provided in the past. 23.4 million for the city, library at 6.6 roughly, $30 million total combined levy for the city of Bloomington and the Bloomington Public Library. So that's a combined rate of 1.3% reduction of 0.07% from prior year. Using the same math, it's not on the exhibit, but if you experience an 11% increase in your assessment with a 3.9% roughly increase, you, you, that $165,000 house, that'd be a $30 increase for combined and $45 increase for a $250,000 house. So those are rough estimates, doing some rounding with that. Next slide, please. Now, these, this is a dollar bill split that we present every year. This is from last year, nothing's final right now. So it's just kind of, it's, it's a little redundant because it hasn't changed at all. But to highlight what the city manager said, the city's at, you know, basically 13 cents on the dollar, 13% of the taxing district, library at three cents or 3%. A district 87, obviously, is the largest component. And the entire tax rate for this taxing district, overlapping tax district for last year was 8.5%. Next slide, please. Unit five, same format, the, the, their, their percentage of the total is a little higher. So the city's at 12 cents and the library at three cents. So that's 15 total. The total tax rate for this overlapping district is 8.8%. Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? As the city manager, I mentioned at the start of the presentation, tonight is the estimate. The final adoption will be December 11th. And then I've already mentioned, I have notes here, but I already mentioned that we have to submit to the county by the last working Tuesday in December. We, we've never had a problem with that. So I've already been in contact with the county rep there. They reach out to all the municipalities or local taxing districts just to confirm. I've let them know when our, what our scheduling is. Next slide, please. So at this point, I guess I will recommend an approval of the tax levy estimates in separate form as was voted on by council. Next slide, please. And then questions, comments?
Okay, do you have any questions? Also, my member Becker.
First, Scott, thank you as always. I appreciate everything you do. And I think just being transparent, you budget and plan the way I do personally. So I have a lot of understanding and respect for that conservative nature. A while back, when we talked about the utility increase, I said something in a meeting. And I said, you know, it would be nice to bring the tax levy down to at least offset that. And I think we've, we've done that, right? We've, we've come about that. Unfortunately, the more I thought about it and the more people I talked to, I came to a conclusion, and I've talked to people that I would say are left politically, right politically, don't know where they are politically, don't care where they are politically. I've talked to every different group. And the sum total is this. You, you use some words and I'm not picking on you, but I'm just, they were a great example. You said this, in order to deal with the shortfall, this is what the city needs to do. But our constituents are all having that same shortfall. They don't have anything they can do. Right? They can't go and say, oh, give me more money so that I can deal with my shortfall. I have met enough people that are saying, I just can't do this across, again, all different demographics, that I think we need to do more than we've presented so far. And the reason I'm confident in pushing that is frankly because of you. I trust that you and your staff can manage saving that additional and taking us down to not using any of that EAV increase because you guys are very good at what you do. So no good deed goes unpunished. That's my suggestion is that we do, we do continue to lower it a little bit more. Thank you.
Councilmember Montney.
One of the residents that I heard from, their EAV increased 33%. And as we talk about $165,000 house and our portion of the dollar bill, as you guys know, these conversations are going on with all of the other taxing bodies. And it's brutal. And I, I, I hope everyone will take the time to read the written public comment that we just got from a Habitat for Humanity homeowner. I made some comments last week about what local bankers are telling us about people calling and expressing concern that they cannot any longer cover these escrow amounts for their property taxes and so forth. So when I step back though and look, and Scott, I want to thank you for all the information that you sent to us earlier today. In the last two years, the state of Illinois has gifted us with significant additional revenue. And then additional revenue has come as a result of inflation, which is, we've discussed before, benefits government at the expense of our taxpayers and our residents. So just looking back in the last couple of years, state home rule sales tax has gone from in 2021, $32 million to in 2023, over $44 million. The amusement tax has gone from 738,000 to 1.264 million. Video gaming tax has gone from 712,000 to 1.269 million. And I, I really appreciate seeing that because that's real money that we were not forecasting and counting for in previous years because, again, it was primarily as a result of state law changes. But it's significant and it more than makes up the shortfall for this. I went back and I listened to interviews last year when we were talking about the public safety pensions and our commitment to those. And I'd like to ask a question about that first, and then I have some comments about that. I noticed that the amount we contributed in 2023 for the public safety pensions was actually less than the amount we contributed in 2022. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes, you're reading that right. And that is one of the, I'll be cautious, one of the reasons that we switched actuaries.
So here's why I have a problem with this. Last year, and as we talked about at council, I mean, I strongly support our first responders and the peril that they place themselves and their families at and the work that they do every day. Last year, when we made that decision and the interviews that I heard members of city staff give and revisited again today, talked about this being additive. I wrote in after that vote and I said, okay, if we're going to make this 700,000 each, and that was the language that we talked about, that it should be additive because we had plenty of other money to put toward that. And, and guess what? It's statutorily mandated anyway that we're going to fully fund these things. So it's not like we need to talk about dedicated revenue sources for them because we have to fund these pensions in that timeframe that was laid out in prior discussions. So I, I just want to talk about that again because when, when I saw, and I, I wasn't aware until recently that our language around this year's increase was yet again going to be focused on the public safety pensions. I feel like we're having the same conversation. And perhaps the prior actuaries gave you a, a different number, but we could have actively chosen to put that additional revenue that we asked our public to give us toward adding above and beyond because it's a situation of pay me now or pay me later in terms of the extent to which we're required to fund those pensions. So coming back then, just to the broader picture around this, it is brutal hearing people talk about what's going on with these other taxing bodies and the ones with the large parts of the dollar or the small parts of the dollar. We have no mechanism to all come together as taxing bodies and to think about what is the tolerance that we have as a collective in representing common constituents to do something that is appropriate and that the, the public can stomach, if you will. It's brutal to read the extent to which there is no discretionary income left for so many of the people that we serve. And again, it, it just, you know, to restate last week, empathy, humility, and constraint. Placing constraints on ourselves to understand how other people are living in this community that we're serving. We have plenty of money to not take this tax increase.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Montney, for calling out the attention to the increased tax resources that we have in this community. And I don't want to put Councilmember Becker on the spot, but I would agree with him if there were additional ways to reduce that 4.9%. And I wonder what figure he might have in mind if he would feel comfortable talking about that.
Sure, yeah.
I would just like to take the whole, assume none of the EAV increase, basically, just go flat.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hendricks.
I'll just give quick comments. So I think what we have here tonight is a compromise that is something that council had discussed previously in other meetings that I thought that we had come to an agreement on relatively. We hadn't received really a whole lot of comments from the council as far as splitting things out or voting separately on anything. We had had conversations of, you know, future decisions of ways that we could reduce the levy, which I think that this does that. I think it's also important to recognize that we are facing inflation, we are facing big projects. We are recognizing the fact that we did agree in prior councils to fund pensions at the rates that we said that we're going to do. We can't do all things, right? It'd be great as a leadership to say, well, we're going to fund all these pensions. We're going to do all these projects. We're going to increase our services. We're going to make sure that we're throwing extra funds at flooded areas of our community. We're going to get our fire department up to staff and we're going to cut taxes lower, which will significantly impact us many, many years down the road. And I recognize, and I can recognize, as a 30-year-old teacher, who, who, I am lucky that I work for a district that pays relatively well, but as far as recognizing lower incomes, you know, I feel as though, as we continue to spread and spread and spread as a community to other areas of town, we're subsidizing other areas that are maybe concerned with an increase of their EAV, also want to see an increase in their EAV, but also don't want to pay the taxes to fund those things and also want new fire stations and increase fire staff and all those sorts of things. So as I sit here, I don't know how we can continue to want to increase all these services that we provide, also cut the taxes and also seem to think that we can do all those things. So an easy vote would be that I could just say no and hope that our city manager and staff could figure that out. But I think a leadership vote is that we vote to lower our rate, try to tighten the belt in areas that we can. And obviously, we are seeing an increase in the EAV that all of us are facing, including me and probably all of us on the council, and try to do what we can. So I think that this is a compromise and something that we can continue to revisit in the future.
Thank you. Do you mind if I?
I think Councilmember Boland also has her light on.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Scott. Did a great job. I appreciate the fact that you put up there the slide that shows exactly what the property tax goes toward because sometimes there's a misunderstanding. And I am hoping, I haven't looked at all the, the numbers, but I am hoping that this increase in the property tax is additive. I think I asked Mr. Gleason at my three-on-one, is this in addition to the 700,000 that we did last year?
Yeah, I want to be cautious about that term additive. It is in addition to the amount we added last year. So if we go to the, I don't know if you want to go to the exhibit, but we bring the presentation up, please, if that's possible? Go to slide five. So just highlighting the, the fire pension line, you can see that we went from 4.196 in 2021 to 4896. So that's a $700,000 increase.
Right.
And then here, we're going to the 5.446. So we are adding to.
Okay.
But, but we still are funding a shortfall on the contribution calculation by the actuary. So we're just, right now, we're just proposing to fund the amount of the, of the contribution as calculated by the actuary.
And also a little bit of history. Previous councils had approved utility tax increase to fund pensions and that type of thing. Is there any opportunity to? I don't know, let's, let's say cannabis. Is there any opportunity to use some of that tax earmarked the same way utility tax is earmarked for pensions?
Can you go to slide number four, please? So in, in effect, I mean, the 1.9 million shortfall, you know, the, the cannabis revenues, the sales tax revenues, everything, you know, in the general fund will be contributing to make up that shortfall along with some of the other items that I mentioned, like the extra 3 million for asphalt and concrete. You know, with all the increases in our home rule, you know, we owe an extra 10% to the county mental health. So it's, 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 it's incorporated in there. We just don't, excuse me, we don't highlight it as a restricted revenue.
Okay. One more question on those. Since I believe police and, at least police, maybe not fire, are filling the vacant positions as opposed to having vacant positions in the past, they're fully staffed or close to fully staffed. Does that then affect the shortfall?
It affects the dollars that are available to cover the shortfall. So that was, that was another, you know, one of the items that we've increased over the last few years and we're looking at increasing next year as an additional public safety staff, additional police and fire, training officers for fire, sworn for, for, uh, police. So, you know, of the general fund revenues, the, the increases that we're fortunate to have seen, some of those are being targeted for asphalt and concrete, the staff for public safety pensions, et cetera.
Okay, okay, well, that makes sense. I don't have anything else, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Montney.
So first of all, I'd like to make a comment about the discussions that we have in our three-on-one meetings. I, I think to the point the public commenter made this evening, we have not, as a group, had the opportunity to discuss this matter. And I think it's
And I think it's essential for transparency in government that these conversations take place within the public purview. I think it's very important to provide a venue for discussions like this. To um to Councilmember Hendricks' comments, looking at our financial statements, um Scott, what is the current balance in our reserves?
That it focused on. Excuse me. Um, we will have the auditors here next week as well, just as a sidebar. Um, for the general fund, the unassigned reserve balance in the audit is fifty-one million.
And how much did we receive from the ARPA uh payouts?
Thirteen point four million.
And we have over thirteen million additional revenues coming from these three cer- um sources that uh were mentioned earlier, um streaming, cannabis, sales tax increases, video gaming. Um, so to the point of how would we cover keeping the levy flat for one year when we're talking about a little over a million dollars? Um, I think simple math conveys that we have the opportunity to cover that.
Thank you. Others? Okay. Doesn't look like we have any other comments for, for now. Do we want to vote on this one first, the city levy first? Is there a motion? Are you making a motion or are you making?
Sure, I'll move approval.
Okay, for the city levy. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Hendricks. Madam Clerk?
Um, just to be clear, we're just voting on the city, not on the library, correct?
Yes, just on the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Okay, uh, there is just four days to announce that he had him passes. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Montney, Councilmember Becker, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Crumpler. We'd need a motion for the library once.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Ward and second by Councilmember Hendricks. And are there questions? Councilmember Montney and then, oh, go ahead.
So um when the grant came in to be used toward the remodeling, um half of the grant, uh as I recall, was retained, uh not put toward principal to add back in amenities that had previously been determined um could be cut. Um, could you bring us up to date on how those funds were um dispensed? And I believe that was in the neighborhood of um two and a half to three million dollars?
So um I'm not sure I recall exactly the um, the figures that we had uh originally. Um, I think one of the things that we wanted to do was um wait until the construction project was done before we made any decisions on uh reallocating any reserves that we had. Um, and I'd have to check the figures on the exact amount that you're speaking to.
Do you recall the full amount of the grant?
The grant's about seven million dollars.
And I believe in the um discussion that we had and as reported, I guess, in some of the news outlets, was about fifty percent was put toward principal and fifty percent was retained. Um, I just recall um receiving very positive updates throughout the construction process that you weren't seeing the increased costs um that had been anticipated.
I'm, I'm not sure that I'm, I'm remembering that discussion that way. I don't think it was fifty percent retained against the bond. I think it was, we added some features back into the project. Um, as far as the specific details, it certainly would be um, we could, we could look those up and discuss those at a different time, but we don't have those right in front of us.
I have them, but it would just take me a couple of minutes to find them. Um, but I do recall they were specifically set aside for the potential to bring back in items that had previously been cut.
Right, there was, right, the parking deck and some other features were added into.
This was beyond that because the council had approved the full amount when the grant came in. Um, that was after the parking uh had already been added. And, and my point is this, um, as we look at the increases for the um for the libraries portion in the last um couple of years, um, pull this document back up. We, we had one year where the tax increase for the library was in the neighborhood of um let's see, sorry. Okay, so two years ago, the amount of the increase for the library was I know I got this right, six point um six nine percent. And then um the prior year was eighteen point twelve percent. So when we're looking at an increase of another four point nine three percent, I think it's important to look at it in the context of a three-year period.
It is indeed difficult to build a twenty-five million dollar expansion without a significant revenue increase, you're correct. At the moment, we are budgeting for basically increased staffing costs, programming costs, and inflationary costs, and trying to keep those at, at a level. And I think the project itself, we're very, very hopeful, it actually may come in slightly under budget, but we're right about budget, which I think I'm personally, as the, as the board president, exceptionally proud of the job that the library staff has done and the contractors in a very difficult environment um to keep this thing really, really tightly controlled. We're very, very aware that it is public money and we're doing our darn best to do that.
Right. And that's been funded and we've already signed off on that. But what we're talking about today is the opportunity here in this next year for yet again another increase that will be additive, that will carry on for years to come. And, you know, just looking at your last set of minutes, you know, sixteen, sixty-nine pages of material on your site, which is wonderful, but there are a lot of things that we're doing that we could pull back on to help reduce staff time. Um, you know, for example, some of the programming that, um, you know, maybe we're over saturating when you see events where the attendees might be, you know, in the low single digits. Um, you know, the staff time associated with um the Connect Transit project. And if you could speak to that a little bit, that would be very um helpful to me, too. Um, there seems to be a lot of enthusiasm for that. Um, and I'm not, um, you know, judging that one way or another. Um, but as we look at this being for staff ads, um, there is opportunity. What I didn't see in that sixty-nine pages was any conversation about how might we find that right balance in our cost structure in terms of our total cost of operations?
We've, the library demonstrated over the years
that um we've scaled back already. We've tightened our belts for so long that at this point um we're ready to uh really uh add some staff so that we can um really meet the needs of the community. And the numbers that you're seeing, that's a little deceptive right now because we went straight from COVID restrictions into half of our building size. So it's hard. Um, our parking's really limited right now, so we're trying to offer programs. Um, and we're seeing some programs have low numbers. Um, and, and that's due to the, the constraints that we have right now. Um, and as terms of the Connect Transit project, I think what you're talking about is during the month of September, we partnered with Connect Transit that if anyone shows their library card, they can ride um the bus for free. And really, that's a very minimal staff time. Uh, maybe a couple hours for our graphic designer to design publicity for that. Um, and then uh we, of course, have increased people coming in to get cards, but that's what we want. We want people to get their cards and use of the services. So that's um a prime example of how we are trying to stretch our staff time uh by uh capitalizing on partnerships in the community.
I would also say that the excitement in the community right now is really palpable. I don't know if you've been into the halfway done, soon to be completely done. Um, it's a pretty great space and I can tell you, having been through the rest of it a number of times, that when it is completed um in the spring, it is really going to be something. And I think that the, the benefit for the community is going to be even better than what I had hoped um in this long process.
Okay, can you, can you give me a second? I, I think we went past the time, so we need an extension, right? Is that what you're motioning to me to?
Yeah, if the conversation's gonna continue, we'd want to do an extension.
I need one more minute and that's it.
Oh, okay. Well, there might, I think there are others who need time, so let's just have a motion and quickly vote. I'll make a motion. If, we, we, do we need five minutes or ten minutes? I'm in favor of five. Five, I'll make a motion to extend this discussion for five minutes. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Hendricks, so just voice.
Yep, uh, Councilmember Kearns? Councilmember, I got you. Thank you. Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dannenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Five minutes.
Just my last comment is I don't disagree. The project is, is stunning. It's an asset to the community. I, I don't think that's in any dispute, but tonight, what we're here to talk about is a proposed tax increase for property taxes for the coming year. So I, I just want to make sure it's clear that my comments are segregating those two. And looking at the data with the, you know, streaming services and digital services continuing to be those that are increasing at the fastest rate, um, I just think there's an opportunity to look at operating costs in a way that is more balanced.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Crumpler?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions and um Jeannie, thank you for reducing, you know, the ask um down to forty-nine, excuse me, to four point nine percent. I, the council really appreciates that. Um, one of our publics, um, comment, uh, one of the members of public comment this evening asked about Friends of the Library. And I wonder if you could give us any sense of, of how that's going, um, what kinds of funds are being raised, perhaps?
Um, so we've raised about seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, I think that it, it's difficult to ask um as a taxing body. We hear a lot, we pay taxes for this. Um, but uh we, we have had support in the community and seen that. Um, and so uh we've been pleased with what we have um been able to gather from the community.
Thank you. And would you say that that three hundred nine, four, three hundred nine thousand four hundred is the lowest amount that the library, that ask, that, that amount that, that dollar gain? Is that the lowest amount that the library needs to maintain its current service levels?
I think that we would be adding a bit of service to that. Um, so uh in turn, we uh, we could reduce uh by reducing some of the, the planned services that we wanted to add, but it would be um a reduction of what we had planned.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boland?
Do you have any um data or statistics as far as projection of increase in um services or need for staff?
Uh, so generally, when a library expands, you do see a, a, a large increase in visitor count, um, and excitement. And we uh already have seen some of that with our half opening. Um, so for example, our um study rooms, we didn't have those in the first phase. Um, and we have six available now and the first day, um, before we had even advertised anything, they were full all day long. Um, and that does uh turn over into staff having to, to manage those rooms. Um, and then, of course, we want to uh celebrate our space by offering programs to the community as well.
Okay. Okay. You understand what I'm asking as far as putting the cart before the horse, I mean, having the, having the numbers before asking for an increase in staff. That's just kind of what I'm asking.
And I, sorry, I do think that we, as a library board and the library staff, have been really careful to, you know, the dreams are huge and I think this is, is very realistic and is somewhat conservative. Um, I, I really do feel that we're, we don't want to have a great facility um that is not adequate, right? I mean, that's something, I think of years ago, I was in Alexandria, Egypt, visiting the, the new library of Alexandria and it was, it was very sad because it was a phenomenal building, but they had no money to source it, staff it, fill it. Um, and it was sort of a, a husk. And we're not going to be that. But what we also can't be is someplace that has way too much in the way, way of resources. So I think that the, the proposal that we have put forth really is trying to, as we have with this whole thing, is to try with the expansion project and the whole nine yards, is to try to sort of thread that needle um and have a really good, cost-conscious approach that offers a rich, rich amount of programming at a, at a good staffing level.
And the staff positions that we're planning on are, one is a security officer because our building will be a lot bigger. Um, and one is programming staff to help um plan for these programs and one is an assistant director, um, which we probably should have hired years and years ago. Um, and we've just been um trying to, to make do with what we have.
Uh, Councilmember Ward, we have sixteen seconds.
Yeah, just as it's important to not be sloppy with numbers, I think it's really important to not be sloppy with words. One of the best things that I get out of libraries is the ability to not be sloppy with words. This is not a tax increase. This is not a tax increase. We are calling for a decrease in the tax rate. It's important to not be sloppy with words.
Okay.
I'd call the question.
Okay, let's uh go ahead and vote then. Yes, and I know we had a second, right? So Ward and then Hendricks for a second, yeah.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes and there are three days to announce?
Councilmember Montney, Councilmember Becker, Councilmember Lee.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, we are going to move on to the next item on the agenda. I had a hard time seeing it, sorry. Uh, presentation and discussion on hydraulic modeling, East Street Detention Basin and related sewer improvements as requested by the Department of, by DUS, Department of Operation Engineering Services. And I am going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Jeff Cherians.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, good evening, everybody. Staff is very excited tonight to have Matt Moffett from Baxter and Woodman present on the hydraulic modeling that they've been uh working on. This is a follow-up to a contract previously approved by the council and is the next step in moving forward with several projects that will help build our system to the hundred-year level. Uh, while specific projects will come forward for your approval in the future, we'll look to you tonight to see if you have any concerns or questions with what is being proposed. With that, I want to turn this directly over to Matt.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, next slide. Um, so gonna go through quickly kind of how this got started, what's the history of it is and um what our recommendation for going to go through quickly kind of how this got started, what's the history of it is, and um, what our recommendation for our path moving forward is. Um, so this uh, recently started back up, I'll say with the June twenty twenty-one storm event, uh, where we had citywide flooding. Um, and we had uh, parts of the city experienced flooding with, with a rain event of greater than a five-hundred-year storm. Um, picture shown here is along East Street looking south. So this is between the Public Works facilities and the Public Works yard. You can see here, a car is completely underwater. Next slide. This is not the first time this has happened. This is, we, uh, historical photo we found of the exact same spot along East Street. Um, prior to the Public Works yard, it was a bacon factory there. So this is nineteen thirty-five. The same street was flooded. Um, so showing that there is a, uh, very history of extreme flooding through this area. Next slide. This is historical photo, um, kind of a map sketch, if you will, of this same area. You'll see Oakland Avenue and East Street. Um, where you see that creek running through, kind of turning at angles, coming right through the middle of what is uh, currently the Public Works yard. So there used to be a creek running right through um, the south part of downtown Bloomington here. Um, as we see in uh, as cities develop, we see this frequently, that creek gets put underground. Next slide. Here's a similar angled photo of the same area. The blue line is representative of a sixty-inch combined sewer pipe um, that was placed underground to convey that uh, what once was a creek. Of course, the topography or the contours of this area, this is still the low spot. Water would flow downhill to the creek and then run on um, to the west to uh, Sugar Creek. Um, that the creek is no longer here. It goes in a pipe when that pipe can no longer take the flows of the water, um, become surcharged and the region floods. Next slide. This is a map of the Bloomington normal area, just to kind of real quick, the explain um, how our sewage systems work throughout uh, the, the region here. Um, the purple line work on the top are normal sewers. We're not worried about those, but just see how they uh, fit in, how it all fit. It all connects um, underground. So it's good to see what, what's there. The kind of blue-greenish teal around the outside of the city of Bloomington area are our MS four sewer areas. That's municipal separate storm sewer system. So we have two pipes underground. A sanitary sewer that collects our effluent from our homes and businesses, conveys it to the wastewater treatment plant and a separate storm sewer that collects storm sewer from our street inlets and whatnot, and conveys it straight to the creek. In the central part of downtown Bloomington and around the surrounding area, the older portion of town, the orange line work are combined sewers. Uh, this was frequently done um, hundred-plus years ago, uh, and it was a more economical way of construction where they would put one pipe underground to collect both the sanitary effluent and the storm sewer, or storm water. And that goes down to the treatment plant. So the treatment plant's treating all the storm water in addition to the sanitary effluent. Then the yellow line work, excuse me, the yellow line work there is the um, Bloomington Normal Water Reclamation District line. So those are reaching out throughout the community, collecting the combined sewer and the flows from the um, sanitary sewers from both communities and conveying it to the uh, West Treatment Plant and the Southeast Treatment Plant. So we're really focused on um, right now, the combined sewer area. That's where we are seeing a lot of the worst problems. Um, that is a common thing. These sewers were put in um, very long ago before we had detention requirements and when we had um, frequently, uh, less frequent and smaller storm events. Next slide. Just to kind of reiterate the point, I know there's a slide that the board has seen prior, um, from uh, previous presentations, just showing how kind of combined sewer system, we've got the runoff from um, residential structures as well as storm water runoff from the street. When the sewer can no longer take it, that becomes surcharged. And we can have storm water mixed with sanitary effluent, surcharging into people's basements and up into the road and overflowing into creeks. Next slide. This is not the first time this has been looked at. There was a twenty-fourteen stormwater and sanitary sewer master plan um, that did look at, um, come to realize that this downtown area, kind of south, southeast of the downtown and the um, heart of the combined sewer area, had the highest frequency of um, and density of reported stormwater issues and basement backups. Also in the same area, highest frequency of roads becoming impassable and um, residents at risk of flooding. And came up with a um, very zoomed out, high-level proposed um, and phased improvement plan. Um, and worth noting, I was part of the team who worked on that twenty-fourteen study, so I have a long history um, with this area of the city. Next slide. Um, real quick highlighting of this study, um, the recommendation first phase was to um, implement a stormwater basin at the site of the Public Works Facility. Um, the intent of that would be to separate stormwater um, from the combined sewer and store it, detain it at the basin to reduce that, the peak flows um, going into the combined sewer. Um, something that I always try to explain for many years with stormwater and after COVID really became a um, something everybody understand is kind of reducing that peak, lowering the curve. So in that peak flow, we want to lower that peak by detaining it so that our systems don't receive so much pressure. Um, next slide. And then the intent was that, that, or the recommendation at that time was that a next phase of that project would um, implement uh, new stormwater conveyance from the basin at the site of the current Public Works Facility, along to um, where the current Nycor facility remediation project is going on. Uh, at the time that uh, site was identified as they were constructing a large hole in the ground. Boy, could, wouldn't it be great if we could just use it for detention? Unfortunately, it hasn't quite turned out that way, but um, it's still a very viable um, site and a good um, option for improvements. Another thing worth mentioning is I, this is all combined sewer area. As I know the city has some history with stormwater separation from the combined sewer areas. Um, this is, would be a significant um, reduction of flows. Um, implementing this full, whole program here would be a significant reduction of flows to the wastewater treatment plant, um, which there's potential cost savings there that um, can be discussed and explored at future dates. Next slide. So having that history, um, knowing that there's a, a very viable option plan of the East Street Basin site where the city owns the property, um, at, following the uh, June twenty-one storm. Um, the city engaged with Baxter and Woodman to kind of reassess this plan and, and um, start down a path towards improvements. So we started this out needing to, um, knowing that we needed to develop a in-depth understanding of the stormwater hydrology and the flooding. And then use that to determine the most efficient way to get stormwater only to the basin. We don't want a large, open, combined sewage lagoon in the middle of, in the heart of the community. We want a clean stormwater basin. And then to ensure that this basin is providing the maximum benefit um, for our design storm event. Next slide. So starting to look at the basin, we kind of zoomed out to look at um, with all the trunk combined sewers running through this area, what, what is the area that where the, what, if the rain were to fall and the water comes through is tributary to the East Street Basin area and um, immediately downstream of it. We, we identified this area shown in the highlighted blue on the screen. And um, we constructed a hydrologic and hydraulic model. So hydrology is uh, the understanding of, I, I kind of mentioned earlier, when it rains, the water hits the ground, how it flows um, from along the ground to um, our sewer network. And then hydraulics is the study of the pipes underground and how the water flows through them. So a whole lot of modeling work and effort, uh, we get into seeing some results on the next slide. So this is that uh, same area um, with a depiction of um, stormwater inundation. Um, this is a, uh, ran a ten-year event. Um, so in a ten-year frequency rainfall event, um, this is the inundation we would expect to see throughout this section of town. Um, on the kind of lower left, you can kind of see the light blue is less than a foot deep. As we get darker blue, we're getting uh, deeper ponding. Uh, one thing worth noting, there are several detention basins and ponds in there that are identified as pretty dark blue. So that's uh, some of those smaller, you know, defined circles are actual ponds that are supposed to be like that, but um, and we're looking at the kind of highlighted yellow area is what we've determined is our, our primary project limits of where we think we can uh, make some improvements towards um, you know, using a detention facility located there at the Public Works Facility along East Street. Um, we'll get into how we determine that here in a little bit. But for just a ten-year storm event, we've got a hundred and five structures at risk of flooding. How we determine that is, is we look at this inundation map, if the flood um, limits touched the edge of a building using our contours, we said that the structure is at risk. Um, there's a good chance that many of those structures will not flood. Um, they may be raised a little bit or their, um, you know, their low entry window wells and doors are up above the ground, but that's how we're determining what at-risk means. Next slide. This is the same map, but with a one-hundred-year rain event. Um, our, our inundation limits have increased um, slightly, uh, but we get a lot more depth throughout. Um, and with, at the one-hundred-year event, we have a hundred and thirty-five structures that are at risk of flooding. Next slide. And this, uh, we got rain gauge data um, from the city of the actual rainfall events that happened um, over two days on June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-one, and ran that rain, real rain event through our model. And uh, came up with this inundation map and um, working with city staff and reports of flooding and pictures that we're taking, we used to collaborate our model and confirm that we were getting um, realistic results of what was actually experienced out there. Um, in this um, rain event, it, within our yellow um, delineated project limits, we have one hundred and ninety-six structures at risk of flooding. Next slide, please. So as we've developed our understanding of our um, of our hydrology, of the, the problems that are being experienced, of what the water is doing, we start getting into the considerations towards um, what our recommended project will be. Many things go into these considerations. We've highlighted some of them here. We want to ensure that there's no negative impact. Um, so we, we don't want to build a big pipe and just push the water over and it causes a problem somewhere else. We have to make sure that everything we do is responsible. We want to make sure that everything that's going to be um, diverted to a stormwater basin is just stormwater. Don't want the lagoon, as previously mentioned. We want to try to um, find opportunities to mitigate structural flooding for the hundred-year storm. Um, this is something that can, um, we certainly cannot realistically um, achieve across the board, but uh, we, we look towards our projects of how we can tweak it. Um, our, our improvements to, to try to maximize structures protected for the hundred-year storm event. Um, we look at street closures, mitigating street closures for the ten-year storm event. This is the, call it kind of uniform design standard. Anything that's built today following the Illinois Department of Transportation guidelines, and this is kind of a national really rule of thumb is to construct stormwater underground infrastructure um, to keep the roads dry and passable for a ten-year storm event. Um, this is what's found to be um, feasibly constructible um, for cost of project, but also physically being able to fit the infrastructure within the right-of-way end of the road. Um, you know, if we're trying to convey the hundred-year storm event in a pipe under the road, um, you know, that's what creeks and floodplains do. You think of a natural channel, a natural creek or river has built, constructed itself to convey that normal flow of a two-to-five-year storm event. Usually has a little overbank for the ten-to-twenty-five-year event, and then a large floodplain for that hundred-year event. It's oftentimes not physically possible to fit that conveyance um, underground um, for the hundred-year event. So that's why this ten-year event is what is the industry standard for um, our design. And then look for opportunities to implement green infrastructure and landscape design to um, help further improve water quality that we hope will eventually be working its way towards a creek and not straight to the wastewater treatment plant where we have to pay to treat stormwater. But then um, also find opportunities for this infrastructure to be part of the community, not just something we put underground. Next slide. So as we're, as we've developed our understanding of the um, how the stormwater interacts with the city in this area, immediately upstream of the, the basins. We, we identified the flooding along Oakland Avenue and road closures there, Oakland. And then also southeast into the um, Evergreen Park neighborhood is what we've been referring to. Um, that area southeast of the East Street Basin. Um, these two areas were directly upstream of where the East Street Basin um, will be and are um, therefore shorter pipes, less infrastructure construction needed to provide a real impact and um, make use of the uh, the, the ba, the basins there at East Street. To be worth noting that while these areas, um, we looked at are, would be receiving the most direct and uh, most notable um, improvements, taking the wa, the water that's taken off of these areas and stored in the um, proposed stormwater basins, does provide some relief to the existing combined sewers, both upstream and downstream, um, you know, throughout the city. So the, those improvements um, are small, but they're there. But the, for the immediate area, the um, there's some really um, recognizable improvements. So looking at these areas, again, um, going through many different iterations of trying to identify the most efficient and economical way to um, meet our goals. Uh, next, next slide, please. We came up with the following um, eight-phase project. Um, so I'm going to, we'll walk through each of these phases, but um, one thing I'll note here before we do, we, we found that um, for the um, problem, the flooding issues that were experienced in that Evergreen Park neighborhood uh, with some improvements to the Baker Ash Basin just south of Lincoln, um, and some uh, neighborhood improvements, stormwater and storage um, through Evergreen Park, we were able to mitigate the um, meet, meet our goals and mitigate the flooding um, in the southeast neighborhood there, which allowed us to focus our improvements um, in the water directed to East Street Basin um, along Oakland Avenue. Um, and that allows us to um, also be considering our future projects and future improvements that may be required for um, flooding mitigation that is further east um, along Oakland as well. Um, so next, I'm going to walk through each of these phases a little bit. Next slide, please. Um, so the first phase is um, primarily some pipe work. Kind of what you're seeing is the diagonal line that goes across through the middle of the blue shaded areas with the red X's. That's our existing sixty-inch combined sewer. Um, we saw previously that they replaced the creek with. Um, the idea of putting uh, detention basins there, we'd have to excavate those down. Can't do that with the pipe running right through the middle of it. So we've got to move the pipe out of the way. So that's the new, the new pipe, proposed pipe is the orange line running right alongside the tracks. Um, as well as improvements on the intersection in preparation for the next phases of the project. Next slide. Phase two would be construction of the East Street Basin itself. Um, one thing worth noting is the Citizens Convenience Center is located um, in that area. So um, logistically, that basin cannot be constructed until the um, Citizens Convenience Center has been relocated. Uh, next slide, a little more about the East Street Basin. Um, kind of how we're currently visioning this, and this is conceptual right now, is that it would be um, kind of split into two different sections, a north section being a wet bottom. Um, so open water and the south section being wetland. So um, about six inches of water with wetland vegetation coming up. That gives us kind of some diversity to what we're looking at, softens the edges, how we see it. Um, provides additional habitat and uh, water quality features. Next slide. So here's a rendering of what we envision this basin can look like. Uh, imagine we're floating in the sky above the brand-new library's brand-new parking deck and looking south. And on, towards us in the foreground is the north part of the basin where we have that open uh, water. And the south, there's the wetland area, we show some trees and and stuff. Um, it's still very conceptual, but um just wanted to give you an idea of um how we see. You know, that this basin could turn out and um look to be really an amenity uh to the to the city in addition to just the stormwater improvements. Um, next slide. Phase three is um should the city be interested in really turning it into a uh much more of an amenity? Um, this is allowing for funds to include things such as a s- uh story walk that could be incorporated with the library. Um, a stone waterfall feature, uh some gateway connection to the Constitution Trail. Um, some different things like this to really uh make this a feature of the city and not just a hole in the ground to collect some stormwater. Next slide. Uh, here, I just wanted to highlight, this is a project that was done um over a decade ago in Champagne, Illinois. Um, this is Second Street Basin. Um, and they have um some vertical wall, open space, rock waterfall. They really went all out on the amenities of this project. Um, and I can just say. I lived about a block from this basin before they did it, and it was not a great part of town. Um, it was kind of halfway between Campus Town and downtown, and not a lot of people made the trek. Bet between the two because it wasn't a great place to be. After they constructed this project with all these amenities, it really turned that section of town around. Um, evident in the photo on the left, um, those were kind of some decrepit buildings, they built in brand new apartment buildings and. Um, really provide a lot of social economical benefits in addition to the engineering stormwater benefits there. So these um phase three is a uh some additional options that could be a potential for the city. Next slide. Phase four, not nearly as pretty as or as exciting, but it's a constructing large diameter pipes along Oakland Avenue. Um, and these pipes would be to bring the stormwater along Oakland um to the basins. It would also be reconstructing the existing combined sewer through there. We um, the way it's. The uh existing sewer currently lies, there's not enough space to fit a new pipe in and keep our required separation from the water main. Um, so we additionally, um, per the city's uh sewer assessment. That pipe is rated in poor condition right now, so it would be needing work in the near future anyhow, so. This would be reconstructing the combined existing combined sewer and then constructing the new storm sewer. Next slide. Phase five, as I mentioned previously, uh, this jumps down to Baker Ash. Uh, we determined that um a good bit of the, a a large amount of water will overflow from Baker Ash. Pop basin and in that area. I'm not just from the basin, but from that surrounding area as well, and overflow north into the Evergreen Park subdivision. And this um contributes to the flooding that is experienced there, so. We identified some modifications to the existing basin that could um reduce that stormwater overflow. Um, into that subdivision. Next slide. Um, phase six is the uh the local improvements in Evergreen Park subdivision. So this is some new storm sewer and a proposed um lo- small local detention facility. To uh mitigate that the waters that do come to that subdivision after the Baker Ash basin improvements. Um, to mitigate the flooding throughout there. Next slide. Uh, phase seven, as currently proposed, would then be the addition of the West Basin. Which of course is where the public works facility currently is, so that would, you know, uh, require relocation of that public works facility to a new site. Um, allowing for the construction of the West Basin. There. Next slide. Here is uh just kind of what that site would then look like after um constructed. Uh, you know, one thing worth noting that we've looked at already, we know with your um downtown streetscape plan that there's bike paths that are being extended. Down along Main Street to this area, we identified with existing concrete ramp off of the abutment there, we could connect. Into those trails um with a bike ped path along the north side of the basin. Connect to the west side, which would then go down and connect to Constitution Trail, so. Um, a lot of additional features that could be added in beyond just our stormwater improvements. Next slide. Uh, phase eight would be um additional amenities, um, looking at additional um. Gateways or overhangs, um plazas, um some. Artwork type sculpture type work we've we discussed, uh, we have a landscape architect on board that has. Um, a number of great ideas, but this is um, you know, really kind of coming down to what uh council wants to see with this site and. Um, how much we want to, uh, what, you know, what level of amenities we want to bring into it, so um, this becomes, you know, a very optional phase. Next slide. So to date, we've been um mostly focused on phases one through four. Uh, we've completed thirty percent design of all four phases, so. Um, that's enough to consider these shovel ready as we're looking. Uh, working with the city staff and um looking for grant opportunities. Um, also allows us to have uh more dialed in cost estimates and um know very specifically what our challenges are. Kind of with that focus, uh, next slide, uh, we've prepared kind of a video of. Uh, it's about two and a half minutes long that will kind of go through the first four phases of this project. So the red outlines are structures that are at risk of flooding the ten year. This is the start of phase one along Main Streets. The proposed relocated sixty inch pipe. View from above the library again, it's our new storm sewer outfall coming into the future basin. Phases two and three again are the basin itself and the um uh potential amenities. Phase four is the construction of the new combines and relocated combined sewer and the new storm sewer along Oakland Avenue. The twenty-three buildings protected is just in the phases one through four, so that's really focused on phases one through four. Um, if you go to the next slide. Here we're looking at the. Hit escape, I believe. There you go. Um, so here, uh, we're looking at that inundation map that we showed earlier, this is our ten year rain event again. Um, after improvements, so after all phases one through eight have been constructed. The flooding throughout um Evergreen Park area as well as along Oakland is really greatly reduced. And and the bottom right here, I think is really speaks to the the benefits of this project, so. In our ten year rain event within our um. Our yellow project uh limits or area of interest limits, we have a hundred and five structures at risk currently. Um, and this phases one through eight protects eighty-two of those one hundred and five in the ten year event. Um, in our hundred year rainstorm, we have a hundred and thirty-five structures at risk, we protect thirty-four of those. And in June, the June of twenty twenty-one rain event, there would have been nine, a hundred and ninety-six structures at risk, and we protect thirty-nine of those. Obviously, the protection numbers for the larger storm events are are much reduced, but as I mentioned. There used to be a creek with a floodplain running through there. Um, engineering wise, we can only go so far. Um, next slide. So I've kind of wanted to show that this we've, how this has been kind, how we've been looking at this, um, I mentioned, you know, our focus has been on one through four. Um, to start with the construction of East Street Basin and the improvements along Oakland Avenue. Um, given the um, the logistics of relocating the Citizens Convenience Center as well as the Public Works Yard. Uh, we're currently in conversations with staff of potentially um. Redirecting and towards uh phases five and six that can be. Um, probably accomplished sooner and don't require other phases to have been completed um prior to their construction. Next slide. Um, is our cost estimate for these phases. Now, there's a lot of. You know, we've been talking with staff, there's a bunch of different ways, this could be phased in different orders, and we've got a bunch, a a number of different grant opportunities. Um, that we're discussing with staff to um look at pursuing. But these are our costs estimates in um today's dollars, so as. Um, we all understand, I'm sure, is, you know, this gets, project takes uh potentially years and to complete. Um, you know, there would be inflation in future years to this. Next slide. Um, this is kind of highlighting, we have a separate contract with the city where we are um looking at the stormwater. Across citywide um in the entire system. Um, I think it's worth noting as well, we, Baxter and Woodman is also currently doing a collection systems um study. For Binward. Um, and one thing that's been really neat about this experience is. As I mentioned before, all of these combined sewers. Tie into the Binward sewers underground and off to the treatment plant. And very rarely do we get to actually build the model like that together, it's two separate models, and we'll say, these are the flows leaving and input them. Into the next one. Um, we were able to do, given the timing and the cooperation between the city and the district, we're able to build one model. Um, representing both systems, how they're constructed underground. Um, one thing I wanted to note, um, you know, we have the East Street Basin circle, the two yellow circles. We looked at earlier that represent Oakland and Evergreen Park neighborhood. Uh, I just wanted to identify the other red circles are the priority areas that we're looking at in the stormwater master plan. Um, that we're currently developing recommendations um for mitigating. Stormwater flooding that happens in those areas um that are. That tie in with the East Street Basin project, so um this will. Yeah, this was done intentionally to all work together and work to separate the. You know, with ultimate goal of separating as much stormwater off of the combined sewer system. That will reduce the pressure and surcharge of that combined sewer system, thus reducing basement backups. Um, and as well as reducing the um loading on the wastewater treatment plant. Next and last slide, uh, I just put this back up with the overall map. Um, I thought it'd be a good site to open for discussion.
Councilmember Ward.
Thanks for that overview, that was really helpful and and in giving us a an understanding. Um, I wonder if you could just clarify a couple of things, can you just, so that we're all on the same page, clarify, explain. The difference between a ten year flood, hundred year, five hundred year, what, eh, explain for everybody what that means.
Certainly. Um, so this is kind of the bane of a stormwater engineer's existence, the the earthquake and hurricane folks did it much better. But uh, the a ten hundred year storm event, what we mean by that, so there's um. The Illinois State Water Survey performed a statistical analysis, uh, it was updated in twenty nineteen of. Every rain events for the last hundred years or so. Um, and they determined the frequency with which any storm might reoccur in any given year. So essentially, if a storm has a ten percent chance of happening in a year. They invert that to a ten year storm. Um, maybe a little easier, a one percent chance of happening is then a one hundred year storm. A hundred percent chance of happening is a one year storm. Um, so it's it's a statistical analysis with a a frequency of the potential that a storm event will happen. In any given year. Um, it doesn't mean it will happen once every one hundred years.
Right. And can you speak at all about the the impact of climate change on the? The frequency of those sorts of things?
Yeah, certainly, so um. We, we have seen an increase in frequency and um quantity, uh, size. Of storm events, um, kind of starting in the late nineties, um, the. But then also in the probably twenty twelve, twenty fourteen, so you see more and more, and even the la- in the last six, seven years, even more. Um, these large storm events are increasing. You know. For whatever purpose anyone wants to call it, the measured data is large storm events are getting bigger and they're getting more frequent. Um, the twenty nineteen updates to what we deter- call our frequency events. Our ten and hundred year definitions are, we call it the design storms. Um, that, you know, in that update included um the more recent larger events up to twenty nineteen. And then they did put um some future projection, looking at the scale of how things have been increasing and and project. Some future increases with that.
Then one last question, I I was curious about what happened to the NICOR. Part of the plan from twenty fourteen and and um. I realize we can only talk about so much in one given moment, but I'd love to hear where things stand with that, and I'm sure you understand why.
Yes, a- as all of you know, that NICOR is still working on cleaning up that site. And uh, we were in talks with NICOR about, hey, could we leave uh the hole and use it for, you know, detention? And uh, the the net result is, long story short, they they need to get uh sign off from the EPA. That no further remediation is needed. And we weren't ready to uh acquire a site that wasn't in that status, and they weren't going to guarantee it. So in in the end, talking to the attorneys and everything else, it was decided we need to let them finish their project. And get their sign off from the EPA that no further remediation is needed for that site. Before we could even uh entertain, potentially get getting it for the city to do anything with.
I realize you can't speak for them, but what's your ballpark estimate of how soon that conversation might resume?
Yeah, so eh, you know, anybody that drives out there can see that there's construction activity with. You know, trucks hauling away bad material and bringing back good material and so forth. They're anticipating that uh, you know, by this time next year, they should be done. They they think that sometime next summer, they'll be uh wrapping things up, and then they have to obviously submit their. Um, you know, information to the EPA for their no further remediation action, but. Um, it's getting close, and uh we're we're currently uh talking with NICOR and their engineers about remediation on Sheridan Street right now. Cause that's, that's one piece that hasn't been touched yet, uh, but they intend to get to that next year as well, so. Uh, it it's getting closer, I mean, it's eh, for anybody that's been around Bloomington knows that that remediation project is going on. Not for years, but for decades, so, but it's getting close now.
Thank you.
Uh, Kevin, this is the most excited I've seen you. Councilmember Crumpler.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Matt, thank you for that presentation, it was um actually um. But it looks really promising, you know, what what struck me was that, you know, functionality and efficiency and green structure were all taken seriously. Right, and and as the as the project goes forward, and as costs do increase, and we know they will. Um, over ten years, I really hope that that green's infrastructure can all be taken seriously throughout the project. And not be cut at the end to save money, or just, you know, be something that's really minimized, and so, so I appreciate, and I hope we can um make that happen. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just uh wanted some comparison, and you pointed to the project in Champagne. Size wise, um cost wise, are we talking similar or vastly different?
Size wise, a best estimate that I could give you, having looked at it and and been there, I would say Champagne's probably twice the size, would you think, give or take? I I can't speak to costs. I know they really went all out on the amenities. You know, they they had that that goal to really turn that area around and um I think it was a risk they took and it it really worked out well for them.
Okay, so this one, we're talking, it's less cost wise, just comparing size then and the amenities you talked about. But yeah, the I have to say that the green space looks very promising. So thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yeah, we're we were just talking about how many years it will take to have another event. Will this East Street Basin work? The timeline beat the next storm? I'm well, I'm just curious about the timeline, basically.
So in general, what is the timeline? I mean, I I can't tell you when a storm's gonna come. No, no, but um do you want to speak timeline?
Yeah, well, as as Matt said, the uh you know, engineering is progressing for that basin. So uh really, it's a matter of getting all the dominos lined up, so to speak, because obviously their their estimate is based on having a blank slate as far as a site to start with. So we have to get the the CCC moved and uh the yards moved uh before we can really get started. And as you saw from the nice video illustration, there's also other stuff, even even if we don't construct the West Basin right away, we still have to construct a pipe that goes over there and stuff. So there's a uh fabric roof building that houses the equipment for public works that has to get moved out of the way for that pipe to get moved. So there's logistics is what I'm saying. And so uh part of that is how quick the logistics can come together, because realistically, the engineering plans uh could be finished up, ready to bid potentially next spring, right?
For the first portion of the project.
Well, I mean, this is a, this is a long term or multi-year.
It's a multi-year, yeah.
Project or even a decade long project um as conversations begun with the railroad. I mean, you know how that goes, right?
Yeah. Uh yeah, yes, we have talked to him, we've um identified the setback required to be able excavate our trench along it and um we were able to meet that setback and uh still get the volume um from the basin that we would require. Also, I don't think I highlighted it, but part of phase one is the reconstruction of all the infrastructure underneath the intersection of Oakland and Gridley. And with that, we would be extending a thirty-six inch diameter pipe under the railroad tracks to pick up the flows um and mitigate a lot of the flooding there just south of the railroad tracks um at along Gridley where there's a lot of um flooding experience. And so uh we've had preliminary discussions with the railroad about um what the requirements would be for that and we're um nearly ready to submit that permit application, but we need to have um some ideas of the timing of when we would be able to start it, because they don't want to see a permit application five years before. But yes, that conversation is beginning.
We have some experience with that, right, Kevin? And well, I have some experience with detention basin, there's a detention basin or retention, but both. There's retention and deep a detention, so what you plan on doing, correct, for the East Street? My only concern, and this has to do with health issues, a wet land in central Illinois is a breeding ground for mosquitoes. So I personally would rather see it be a dry basin, you know, rather than leave water in there with grass growing. Uh not that it has to be mowed, you know, have natural native grasses growing or cattails, but to purposely have water standing. I wouldn't be a fan of that. Let's just put it that way.
Um in in most of these uh wet basin situations, they get added to your mosquito abatement districts list. Um and they'll get the uh mosquito treatment put into them generally. So that would do a first part of mitigation. Um the the wet bottom part of the basin would be um large enough to um sustain small fish and other stuff that would eat those mosquito eggs. And actually, the wetland part of it with those grasses um provides habitat for a number of other little critters that enjoy eating mosquito eggs.
Kevin, can you remind us what that neighborhood is that we're doing that work on in with the sewers? Is it Meadow something?
Yeah, Meadowbrook.
Right, is that located somehow near or inside this work area?
It it it's tributary to this area, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Uh Councilmember Ward.
Just briefly, presumably the railroads also would be affected by floods, right? So wouldn't they have a stake in in seeing this move forward?
You you would think that, I mean, that that railroad, well, I mean, there's not a ton of trains on it, right? So I mean, and and one of the things you'll notice too, that a lot of times uh compared to the streets nearby, the the railroad is up in the air. Well, you know, part of that is by design, they don't want to be flooded.
Other questions? If everything was done, this would be a ten year project, did you say? Did you say that or?
Not.
Ten?
No, not necessarily.
Oh, okay. How many years do you think? Assume in a perfect world?
I I would say i- in the in your perfect world, once the public works facilities um were cleared, this could be done, I mean, potentially could be done in two years. Probably more realistically, a three to four year if the funds are there and it's moving.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see any other questions, comments, so I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to really uh say how much uh we've appreciated the vision that Matt and his team have brought to this and that they've been able to explain, uh peppered them with all kinds of questions and they are always very responsive and to our back and forth. And so we really appreciate that. I also just want to say that, and I know a lot of, the council knows this, but for the public, our public works facilities are not brand new, top of the line facilities, they're very dated. We have uh gas pumps that are gonna have to be shut down in the coming years. Uh we have space needs um and and just really facilities that we've actually been looking to relocate for, you know, ever since I've been with the city in twenty fourteen and before then. So this actually is gonna provide potentially several opportunities for the council and the public, I think several win-win opportunities. Also evaluating what we can do with the citizens convenience center, what's the most efficient there? How do we, you know, how do we look at that? So this is providing a lot of opportunities, really appreciate the opportunity to bring this in front of council tonight. And then I would just turn it back to City Manager Gleason and if he has any additional comments.
Before you go, I wanted to ask about the grants. Can you expand? Oh, is that what you're gonna say? Okay, all right.
And I'll try to be brief, but I truly get excited uh about these kinds of kind of conversations. You know, for the community, uh you know, if I'll remind you that I talked about this elected body uh that's up here right now. That more is going to be coming at this one in the first six, nine months than any uh elected body that I have served. And this is one of those conversations. Uh this is a twenty fourteen study that uh Matt was a part of then. Uh it was sort of resurrected with increased emphasis, uh you know, after the June storm event uh that we're not gonna build a system to accommodate that. But we know that uh we fall short in a hundred year industry type of uh standard. So it's uh these kinds of conversations, whether it's asphalt, concrete, water, sewer, stormwater. Uh it truly is exciting to talk about this. Now, what past councils may have done, what uh past staff uh might have presented, you know, I don't have a clue. You know, and and don't know the rest of the story that might have come into those conversations in the past. But try to prevent, uh try to present to uh the community in this council all the needs of uh the community and try to explain now why are we here today, how we're gonna pay for this. Uh that's why, you know, related to uh the conversations that Scott uh presents at the end of every month, it is important to talk about uh the revenues uh that we have, the expenses that we know that are coming up, uh the reserves that we have in place for this type of very, you know, topic that we currently have. But we also explore through our lobbyist uh that was hired earlier this year uh have already set in motion trying to explore some of the grant opportunities to fund a project like this. Uh Tim Irvin sitting in the back uh there, he's the executive director with Binward. You know, just trying to seize these opportunities where we can be uh more efficient uh and work uh collaboratively and also find that there's a cost savings, whether it's today, uh but it also includes some of the partnerships uh going forward on the work that we do. So all hands on deck moment, not just on this topic, but many that are related to infrastructure. So very much appreciate uh council listening to us. And uh I think, Mayor, I might have answered your question in my hopefully brief comments.
Yep, sounds good. All right. I thank you all very much for a wonderful presentation and certainly look forward to continuing to work with all of you. Yes, thank you. And we are going to move on to the next item, which is a city manager's discussion.
Just like uh committed the whole mayor, uh but this time I have no slides, but uh was told by uh the elected body and also staff uh to the city of Bloomington. Uh happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and safe travels if you're on the road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And uh is there a motion to adjourn? Sorry, okay. Geez, all right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those are true, listening by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.